We'll call the November 18th meeting of the Select Board to Order. Just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded. First up is warrant 2610 in Facilities Project 74.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Warrant number 2610 dated November 13th, 2025 comes in for payroll about $905,000. You'll see there overtime for police and fire. Snow's still at zero, which is a good thing. Bill's payable, you'll see, comes in at about $3.5 million. A couple of things worth highlighting here, but a bulk of it is the Masco assessment coming in just under $3 million, $2.8 million or so, $2.9 million. Also, on the other end of the spectrum, at $2,526, the purchase of a time capsule, which is for the municipal project. So, thank you to Chief Martinuck for all his work coordinating those efforts. Also, an annual town meeting appropriation of about $25,000 or so to outfit the chief's new car as part of our capital plan. And a little bit there for a little over $1,000 for the pumpkin festival as well. For Facilities Project 74, just about 82Ks, a light one. Just a couple as we continue to hone our final approach here, a couple of small redesign things, soft cost items. But I would expect the next warrant to show a pretty substantial construction payment that as we continue to draw down those funds. We'll also be working to try to narrow down our final borrowing, something that we've been discussing internally for a little while as well.
It was very nice to see the trees.
To see what?
The planted trees.
Oh, yes, right, yeah. It's the sidewalks are in too, and it's, yeah.
Very nice.
Any questions? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept warrant number 2610 and Facilities FP 74, 82293.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And next is Town Administrators' Updates and Reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A few notes around town. As referenced at the last meeting, the tow contract for the Police Department is currently out to bid, so anybody who's interested, you can find that on the Bids and RFPs page on the town website. The deadline is Tuesday, December 2nd. I joined Selectman Printakis and Finance Committee Co-Chair Erickson on November 5th at Masco to have an early conversation about their budget process, and that was a good reflection of the concerted effort between Middleton, Topsfield, and Boxford to get our budget messaging out to Masco early, because I think what we've run into in recent years is that by the time we deliver that message to them, they're already so far down the road in building out what their priorities are. It's, it's, they're kind of a big organization, and they're not terribly nimble, so it makes it hard for them to turn on a dime. So hopefully, giving that news earlier helps inform their decisions as they go through the budget process. The Veterans Day ceremony was both chilly and well-attended. Thank you to the Patriotic Observances Committee, volunteers, residents, and town departments that helped make that day possible, and of course, thank you to our veterans. I'm working on establishing calendar year '26 through '28 goals at your upcoming Select Board meeting. Typically, we do fiscal years, but at this point, we're halfway through the fiscal year, so a little behind the eight ball on that one. So we flipped to calendar years to kick off the new year strong. As always, I greatly appreciate feedback from the Select Board, so if you have, you know, two or three, or however many as you'd like, big-picture things you'd like to work on in the next year, please send them my way. I'll incorporate them in the document. And I also sent an email out to our department heads this evening asking the same, just because while we have a good, broad view and broad understanding of the organization, their knowledge is a little bit deeper and specialized in some areas, and so there may be some things that they're seeing that we don't, and we appreciate when they provide that input. The deadline for the December ZBA meeting has come and passed as of today, and so what that means, for those of us that are eagerly watching the calendar, that any proposed project at 35 Village Road won't be coming before the ZBA until January at the absolute earliest, if it even hits January. So we'll continue to keep an eye on that. Separately, Vilbridge Middleton, the project in the town center there, has expressed intentions to come before the ZBA to propose some smaller changes to the commercial element of their project. So we had talked about this a little bit last month and the month prior. So basically, the residential element is staying entirely the same. They just want to bring it back and have it blessed that the final construction documents reflect what the ZBA had discussed and approved based on feedback from the community. The commercial piece, more specifically, is relative to who they could secure for, for an anchor tenant. You okay, buddy?
Oh.
He's good. Okay.
He's dirty.
Oh, man.
Poor little bud.
Who they can secure for an anchor tenant, and that will kind of dictate how the rest of that is built out. And so, from what I have heard from the developer, they have secured an anchor tenant, and he wishes to communicate that to us. So I pulled together ZBA Chair Benavento, Scott Fitzpatrick, our interim planner, myself, I think Jackie may be out that specific day, but just to get everybody on the same page to talk about what they're going to be bringing forward, what it's going to look like. I don't, I can't give you a specific, but a restaurant's back in the mix. That was off the table. It's back. So little things like that.
On the commercial, the residential piece, when was the approval?
It's been over a year.
And it's good for two years?
So I have conflicting reports. So two is what I hear most often. I have heard some people say one under certain conditions, and so I have a note to put a feeler out to Attorney Tallerman, just to confirm that. But, and I think what you're getting at is there's a, for the folks watching at home, there's a certain deadline that people have specifically relative to our safe harbor when it comes to 40Bs, and with the 35 Village Road, there may be competing interests in terms of timelines there.
Well, I was more, the question was more, how long does he have to start construction?
Before he has to get an extension. Yeah. Also a valid point. So I'll nail down those dates.
Was there something on, excuse me, Custer, was there something on test pits or something? We're gonna, is that something where people are gonna drive by and start seeing it?
So.
Old property?
At, at, for the Vilbridge project, they were doing test pits several months ago.
Yeah.
For the Village Road project, unfortunately, and the projects unfortunately have the same attorney too, so it's gonna.
Okay, so that's what confused.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So for the, the 35 Village Road project, they're there this week doing test pits.
Okay.
So, and still collecting data. And that site, as we had predicted internally, along with some of our boards and committees in relation to the MBTA zoning conversation, that, that site has some challenges, and no one's just gonna walk in and build something there. So I think they're finding that the more they poke around up in the woods, but they can figure it out, they're, they're certainly welcome to it. The Citizens Academy has wrapped up for the year. I just want to thank the, the residents that participated. I think they, they got a lot out of that experience. And then thanking J.J. Domeno for helping us execute our department heads, also that participated regularly throughout that process, and of course, Jackie Brezlinhan for taking on that commitment, particularly given the current flow of work in our office. I think at one point in time, I had asked if she wanted to set it aside, and she was insisted on pushing through in the fall. So kudos to you, Jackie, for.
Thank you, Jackie.
For being limitless.
And I've heard of, from lots of people that didn't do it, and talking to the people that they, that did do it wished that they had.
There we go.
So I think.
Gotta keep that buzz alive.
Yeah. Would you like to give it a quick plug? Is there anything you want to add to that?
We'll be back Fall 2026 in our new buildings and our new police and fire stations. To echo Justin, thank you to J.J. He did a great job executing, and all of our department heads did a wonderful job. And the first year's always the hardest, so it'll be a little bit easier when we come back next year, but signups will be open August 2026 for those that would like to join us in Fall of '26, and I hope you'll join me in congratulating all the attendees when they join us at your December 2nd meeting for their graduation.
Good job. The Middleton Social Services Advisory Group will be holding their first meeting on Tuesday of next week, and I look forward with, meeting with those various partners so we can find out how we can maximize our efforts to ensure the needs of Middleton's most vulnerable folks are met. So it's an important cause there. As of today, the municipal building project remains well under budget, and it is down to four days past schedule. I knew we'd get it back. At one point, maybe two months ago, we'd ballooned out to about 28 days behind, some site work issues and other things, but we're down to four days, so not too bad. As referenced earlier, the trees are in, sidewalks are in, there's a bench outside the public safety facility. It is looking like a, a real municipal complex. And the driveway that is currently open is going to be closed. It's looking like next week, and we're gonna flip currently over to the new driveway on the other side of the trailers. They'll also be doing some lane striping sometime this week, potentially tomorrow, depending on how the weather looks, just because of the lane shifting they were doing out front. Memorial Hall, lastly, Memorial Hall at 195 North Main Street will be closing at 1:00 PM on Wednesday, November 26th. That's the day before Thanksgiving. It will not be reopening until the following Monday in recognition of Thanksgiving. And on that note, thank you, well, several thank yous. Thank you to the residents of Middleton for the opportunity to serve them. Thank you to this board, and of course, thank you to all my coworkers for making this a great place to work. So a lot to be thankful for and grateful for this November. And that's everything.
And just, if you could change the agenda to municipal complex instead of campus?
Thank you.
It's a habit.
We're doing it for like two years, yeah. We'll get, we'll get on the next one.
Next is the Government Finance Officers Association presented the town of Middleton their distinguished budget presentation award. And, you know, these, the budget documents are reviewed by three people, and most, there were lots of fours, majority of threes, and one or two twos before, in each, in a category by just one of the three reviewers. So it was, you know, quite an achievement. So, Justin, Eugene.
Sure. So it is indeed a pretty thorough process. In their own words, it reflects the commitment of the governing body and staff to meet the highest principles of governmental budgeting. Getting this award is a pretty big deal, and Sarah, our finance director, if you want to come up to the table, quarterbacks this process. Sarah also.
I'll sit next to Sarah.
Sarah also hates compliments. So she often undersells this accomplishment, but I want to make sure that it's, it's right front and center. It's fifth year in a row, I believe, which is even that much more impressive. I talk about this often. I, I think I talked about it even when I was interviewing for the role here several years ago. Transparency gets thrown around a lot in government, especially municipal government as a buzzword, but I think this award, I think, shows that Middleton stands by that in terms of how we both go through our, our public process for budgeting, but also how the final budget is provided and made available to the public after the fact. It's an extraordinarily open process. It's a digestible budget, and there's a difference between doing a, a data dump and just pushing out a ton of information out there that, you know, residents would have to sift to, sift through and try to make sense of. The way we do budgeting here in Middleton is a comprehensive process. It's done in full daylight, and it's done in such a way that residents can see where their tax, taxpayer dollars are going. And a lot of that I credit to Sarah and her team, and her consistent and dogged insistence that we do things correctly and by the book, which sometimes is frustrating, but it's an important check to the work that we do. So thank you for your persistence and for your commitment, and this award is a physical representation of all your efforts. So, good job.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Good job. Yeah.
How many years in a row? Five. Ah, he's not standing.
Sarah has been with us for several years beyond those five, getting the awards, and we have worked out a contract extension so that, that would start in, you know, with the new fiscal year, so it will be another three years. So is there a motion to ratify the contract with Finance Director Sarah Wood?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the contract, like all our contracts, are posted on the website, so if anyone is interested in the details, they can find them there. Next is a reappointment of Veteran Services Officer Kevin Welch. Kevin, welcome back. We missed you.
Kevin, do we want to get the little ones and your wife out there?
I mean, if you want to invite the chaos in, I can certainly.
Oh, hey. You're so cute. How could we not?
My wife is very supportive. I'm a very lucky man, so we'll get that on the record. But she loves to come and bring the kids to support, which is great, but they are sheer chaos.
They're supposed to be. They have a job to do. They're doing it well.
They're quite successful.
Yeah, Jackie just went together. They can stand up there with you, keeping busy.
Here, bud. They wanted to know what your name was. So nice and loud, can you tell us what your name is?
What's your name, bud?
Alexander.
Great job.
What's it, what's your name?
Eloie.
Eloie.
Oh, such a beautiful name.
Oh, how old are you?
Two.
Two.
Oh, boy.
Yep, sheer chaos.
So Kevin, when will you be starting?
Um, I, so I have been your interim for the last couple of months, covering since Nathan's departure, so I would say I have already started. I have put my notice in at the other position though, and so December 1st, I am yours free and clear.
Excellent. So.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Yeah, just in time for Reith Across America, which is a great event.
Such a beautiful.
Yeah, I love taking, taking part in that one.
All right. Is there a motion to appoint Kevin Welch, our Veteran Services Officer, through June 30th, 28th?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're happy to get you back.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure to be back. Thank you. Thank you. Such a great counter. What's the last one?
He did a great job.
And the last one, 17. All right. They got to do some important business now. Should we go, go get some dinner?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Enjoy.
Thank you for coming in.
He's chief, look out.
Can you say hi?
Hi.
Nice to see you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Hey, chief.
Good evening, good evening. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Excellent, excellent. Well.
Is, yeah, appointment of a retired reserve officer, Thomas McParland.
He should be a friendly, friendly and familiar face. You know, Tommy did 30 years here with distinction, retired, was gonna be a bus driver, and Ralph Kramer took the job before he got it, and he, you know, we got this, this, this new programmer who I think is gonna be, work out excellent, and Tommy was one of the first ones that we thought of, you know, when we were drafting it. And soon as it went through, he reached right out, said he was interested in coming back, a lot of experience, well-liked in the community, so I think it's a, a good opportunity to bring him back and a good opportunity for the department moving forward.
Hundred percent.
Yep, yep. That's a benefit to Tom, Tom. Thanks. I've known him my whole career, just about, and he's on the list of, you know, some of the best. So thanks for coming back.
Yeah, I, I don't think we have any grilling questions for you, since we know you. So is there a motion to make the appointment of Thomas McParland as a retired reserve officer through June 30th, 28th?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
And thank you for coming back.
Welcome back.
Coming back, coming back. This is the night of welcome back.
Next on the agenda is a recognition for Detective Sergeant Adam Messini and Officer Henry Bouchard. Chief?
Yes, we have the other officer. He's just got tied up. He's, he's on his way.
Do you want us to put this off until he can get here?
He gets here.
He should be here.
Okay, very good.
Thanks.
Next.
Do the donation.
Yep. Is a donation acceptance of $1,000 for the Middleton Food Pantry from the Jeff and Carol Kirby Foundation. And I assume this will be the last food pantry donation that the town will have to accept since now they can go directly to the.
Exactly. Among the last, if not the last, as they're still trying to get their feet under them at the, with the, figuring out the legal logistics with the Middleton Food Pantry. But that is correct, yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept?
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the $1,000 donation from Jeff and Carol Kirby Foundation, and thank you very much.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, but also with thanks to them.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Right, so, thank you very much to the Kirbys. We'll skip down to the Charter Review Amendment, and there's a couple of things that the legislator attorney wanted to clear up. You know, the first in section was some of the language that we had written didn't quite make sense, and that cleared up the language so that the intent of the committee and of the town meeting vote was clear. And the second was in the same nature. So nothing substantive has changed. The legislature just wanted us, the Select Board, to vote that we agreed with that language. So any questions, any concerns?
Nope. I do not.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the amended Charter Review.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, we can.
Mr. Chair, if I may note, we just want to thank J.J. Domeno, who's been shepherding this process. We're already to the bill in Third Committee, and he's been doing a wonderful job working with House Counsel and our legislative delegation to get this project across the finish line.
Excellent.
So when will these actually be, be law, or be in the?
Well, we have to send the vote back. How long does it take them to turn that around?
So, my understanding is they're trying to get it in before this session closes, which I believe is December 31st. So we're hoping by early January to have good news, but I don't ever want to predict for you accurately what the general court is gonna do.
And on March.
Touche.
All right. So now we'll go back to the recognition of Sergeant Adam Messini and Officer Henry Bouchard. Chief?
We had a, a business in town, the Yankee Gas and Fireplace, and we started receiving numerous phone calls of complaints of, you know, the business practices. A lot of times, these are difficult investigations, and a lot of, a lot of different agencies look at them as civil as opposed to criminal. So we, once we started getting multiple victims, you know, I sat down with Detective Sajid Messini, and we started looking at the actual claims, reached out to the District Attorney's Office, you know, spoke with them on what would be the best way to proceed, because like I said, these, these cases don't get done too often. A lot of times, they look at it as, you know, just leave it to the person themselves to get their own remedy, which in certain cases, like we looked at in this one, we didn't feel that was a proper thing. So Detective Messini, Detective Sajid Messini began working early, speaking with victims, running down a lot of different avenues of where this case was going. At the end, we ended up with 28 victims, which, you know, clearly is very substantial. He was able to secure warrants for the suspect and found that the suspect was no longer around. Suspect had fled the area. So after we got the warrant, started looking, that's when Officer Bouchard got involved, reached out to the State Police, the Violent Crime Unit, the Fugitive Unit, which we've in the last couple of years really worked to get a good relationship with, because it's important, they do an excellent job, and they're a great asset. So they worked together to find the, you know, the suspect. They were able to locate him in the city of Lawrence, took him into custody without incident, and he was brought to court. He was arraigned, so the charges now are, you know, he's awaiting charges right now. Since we put out that release of what had gone on, we've had multiple more victims called, so the case is ongoing, and, you know, you don't know where these ones are gonna lead, but it was an outstanding job by both of them.
Outstanding.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, is there any possibility of the victims getting some of their money back?
Well, that's what we hope the courts will do. There's difference, you know, when it's a criminal charge and they, and they go, if somebody's found guilty, then they do get ordered by the courts, which is a little different than the civil end, so you have more chance of getting reimbursed or, or some compensation back. So that's why we felt this was the, the proper way, and the multitude of victims made it, you know, clearer for us to go forward.
And the 28 victims you referred to were just Middleton residents? Or was it, you know, residents of different?
No, they were from all over. Anybody that actually used the store.
Okay.
But there were people from Middleton as well.
Very good.
Yeah, so it was a, it was a great job by both of them.
As usual.
Intricate. Thanks.
If I can, I always like to take these times to point out the, the part of the police work that the public doesn't see unless you're the unfortunate victim or the unfortunate perpetrator. You know, there's more than just, you know, writing tickets and, you know, pulling overspeed is, so thank you, aware of how much work that takes and, and, you know, the dedication you have to have to, to see it through. Courts aren't gonna take you seriously if you're not doing it the right way, and clearly, by your recent track record, you've been very effective, so thank you very much.
If I might add to the administration within the department and from the town is a big part in how I operate as a investigator, because I know I'm getting support from the chief, from the people in this room, and without that, I probably wouldn't be as successful as I have or as, as a unit, and as you all know, we all work hard for our residents and the people who travel through Middleton and the business owners, and that, that's a first step. But many sleepless nights, but in the end, it's, it's all, it's all worth knowing the support, but I just want to say, you know, thank you.
You're very welcome.
If I may, just, just to write on Adam's coattails here, I sincerely appreciate the recognition by the administration, everybody here. Just to make it abundantly clear, Adam has put in tremendous amount of man-hours into this case. This is really his baby. I more or less just acted as an agent on his behalf, but that's largely due to the culture that's been established here. A lot of collaborative effort, there's a big focus on teamwork, especially working with our inter-agency partners, with the State Police and everything. It all went together very seamlessly, but that, that's largely due in part to, to these guys here, so. As much as I appreciate the recognition, my, my involvement here is very miniscule, so I just want to make sure we're all.
He's humble.
Yeah. Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, me and Henry too.
Well, congratulations, and thank you for all your hard work, you know, and not only the two of you, but the entire department. We appreciate it.
Like I say, it's tough, right? A lot of it's a need-to-know basis, so a lot of times, the people just won't know, you know, it's not, but it's being done, and it's being, it's being executed.
No, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Chief, you know, if you have a minute, you know, our next agenda item is going to talk about our winter parking policy. So if you have any thoughts.
All in here.
We, you know, you sent us some things from various communities. The clearest one was Topsfield. If it snows, don't park on the street. But, you know, you know, it's gotta be something that people can understand, and because you don't want people parking on streets and making the plowing of the street more difficult, but how do we communicate that if, you know, towns that have, you know, a snow emergency? How, how does that get communicated to the residents so that they know? So, the policy's gotta be clear, it's gotta be, be able to be communicated, and so that if the police need to enforce something, they can. So, any thoughts?
Yeah, well, I think it's, excuse me, as well as that, also when the policy make, you know, identify who.
know, identify who, we know who we're trying to get attention of, but how are we going to do that? Does it, you know, include, it's social media, it's sign board, it's, you know, those kind of things. So to, you know, to buffer your statement that way there, when it comes time for enforcement, you know, we did what we said we were going to do, and we do the best we can to notify people. So I don't know if you have any other thoughts.
So it seems like there's a mix of competing departmental interests relative to this one in terms of executing whatever the policy ultimately may be. And Chief, feel free to take a seat at the table, by the way.
Oh, it's a place to sit all day.
And so I think by example, the way that this had popped up last year and the reason it was a topic, I believe, is because there were some vehicles that were ticketed, but there wasn't a weather event, and it created some consternation there. And so, you know, in talking with DPW Director Goodwin earlier this week about this topic, obviously he's on the snow removal side of this policy, he's of the belief that having established dates similar to what existed previously, you know, November to April, or if we push it back, you know, December to February or whatever works, in his mind is most clear cut because it's this to this, right? And I think for my office, that makes sense because administratively, having to go through the rigmarole of, all right, what's the weather looking like? Is it actually going to snow? Is it raining? Do we have to put something out on social media? Do we have to put it on the website? Do we have to do a reverse 911? For every weather event throughout the winter, that's cumbersome for us. We can do anything, but that's cumbersome. And I think for, and I don't want to speak for the police, but for the chief's side of things, when they're on the side of the policy where they have to actually be the unfortunate ones to go out and actually ticket people and deal with the frustrations that come from that, I would think that you'd want to only have to do that if there's an actual weather event and it's actually snowing instead of going out, and I mean, you can speak to it.
Well, it's a difficult question. You know, our job on enforcement is basically for the DPW so that they reinforce these so that when they have to come out and plow, they don't have obstructions. So for us, it's easier if we have the dates because then everybody knows the rules going in. If you have altered dates or snow emergencies, if they don't see the sign, if they don't go out that day, if they don't, whatever, they're just staying home for the week. And then they come out and get a ticket. You know, it's, they get more upset. And I can tell you, the number one thing people get upset about more than any other is a pocket ticket. People hate pocket tickets, they really, really do. So it's tough. It's, you know, whatever decision you folks make, we'll work with and we'll live with if it's, you know, however you want us to do it, we can do it because we're the enforcement arm on that. But, you know, some good arguments against, you know, why I shouldn't have got a ticket is they were unaware. And when they do it, social media and things like that, that's going to be every situation, they're just going to say, I was unaware that I couldn't park there. Where if you have strict, it's from this date to this date, it's posted everywhere, everyone knows. So they really don't have a reason not to understand, and then when they do get the ticket, they just forgot or whatever the reason was, didn't think it was going to snow. But they don't have an argument saying, I wasn't informed.
The only thing, and I agree, and the only part that's a negative to that is, are you not doing your job when 90 days' worth of snow ban or whatever it is, let's say it doesn't snow, but honestly, I don't want to see people getting ticketed, you know, because it's, you know, if there's no issue, you know, if it's not snowing, you know, I don't know if that, I mean, when that's not a money, it's not a money grab thing we're trying to do. You know, like you said, it's for the ease of the town to, you know, service the community. I don't know what anyone's thought of that. I mean, I sound bad saying, yeah, we want you to enforce it, but not all the time, but that's how I feel. I mean, and that, and I'm sure that that, and I know that that's generated a lot of animus from neighborhoods, you know. You know, you start doing that, and maybe you get to the end of the season and you haven't ticketed every car all winter, and now they're fielding calls, and people say, hey, it didn't happen on Meadows Road, but it happened on Liberty Street, that kind of thing.
And we do get that of discretionary, they're only picking on this neighborhood, they're only, and sometimes we do get calls that say, hey, it's, we're at the pocket ban, and there's somebody parked in the street. And it's more of a neighborhood dispute than it is the real emergency, but we do get those calls. And then we got to go out and cite them because they're bringing up, you know, you can't go and say, well, they're okay, because then when it does come and they get a ticket, so you got to kind of, we have to be pretty much blanketed that we enforce it, you force it early on, and that usually prevents them from the rest of the season. But yeah, it's frustrating when there's, you don't have any snow, and you get tickets, they look like, why do we have this parking ban? So that's what we get to these discussions.
Were you actually have problems last year? Was it, was it truly problems with cars that were in the way of parking, of plowing last year?
Not that I'm aware. I mean, on a case-by-case basis, I'm sure, but what really started the conversation was a scenario that, like Chief just described, where one neighborhood got ticketed, but there wasn't any snow.
What was the reason for that?
Because we had the ban.
And so it could be a neighbor calling in and saying, you know, really, they just hate their neighbor, everyone loves everyone in Middleton, but, you know, maybe this individual has an accident with this neighbor, called in and said, hey, there's a parking ban, they're parked in the road, why isn't the PD enforcing it? That puts Chief in a tough spot in his team. So that's kind of the...
And then that resident, probably pretty savvy to who made the complaint, is aware that, you know, 80% of the rest of the town hasn't received one yet.
So, and that's my point. It's tough for us to say, well, it's not snowing, because that's not what the law is. The law is that they can't park there. So when we get the call, basically, we don't, we can't really say that because then, you know, it goes down the road. You either enforce it or you don't, you know.
Do you think it's, I mean, something I would do and probably have done in the past, knowing what something like that can start? Sometimes before you just, you know, whatever, middle of the night, leave the orange ticket, you try to make a, say, hey.
And that happens. You know, there are officers that go out and literally try and make a phone, knock on the door and say, hey, you can't park out there.
And that has to happen.
Some do that, and again, some don't. It would be proper to me, reasonable, that you go if you don't have problems in a neighborhood. Now, if you go there three times in a row and they're not there, but if it's the first time, you could absolutely make the outreach to try and get the person to correct it before we have to, absolutely.
Particularly when you're talking neighborhood today, because we're aware of, you know, what's going on. So, I don't know, I just don't want to see like one night.
No, because that's more...
Blankets and stickers one night, because we got a long way to go before the ban's over, and that's just not a reason.
And it's tough to tell the officer, you can't do that, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Because, well, that's the law, and why don't we? So it's a delicate balance. You try and talk to some people, but you know, you're just going to have some people that feel, hey, I'm big on this with the pocket ban, I'm going to make sure my zone is, is nobody's parking in that. Can't say they're wrong, you know, common sense in, goes a long way, but...
Can the way that the ban is written ease some of those concerns?
So I think my preference would, you know, considering all of these factors, I think my preference would be to have a winter parking ban, common sense based on precipitation and based on my own experience in the community in which I reside. If it's snowing, I pull my car off the road. And if it's not, it can sit out there for weeks, and it's fine. And so I think if we, if the Select Board puts forth a policy, and we craft it in such a way that it's clear that during a, you know, winter weather event, or however you want to phrase it, that your vehicle has to be off the road for X amount of hours, you know, following, and there's a few in here that have language similar to that, following the weather events so that cleanup can occur for the DPW. That way, the PD's not in a situation where there's a, you know, say a two-week stretch in December where a flake hasn't flown and people are afraid to park on the street, and then neighbors are calling in against neighbors, the expectation is weather-dependent. And I think we have a way that we can do that.
Can I add one piece, too?
Please.
And I think that weather-dependent has to be snow and ice because so often, the guys are doing a lot more sanding than they are doing plowing these days when we get with the reports from Paul. So I think that's something to make sure we're all thinking about as well.
All right, so should we have you guys draft something for our consideration before we adopt anything?
For your December 2nd meeting.
What was last year's policy?
You lifted it, and we never reimplemented one.
That's right.
So there was no policy?
Correct.
So it was legal to park on the street all winter?
The world kept turning, right? So sometimes I'm more of the camp of like, why overcomplicate this? But at some point, there needs to be some type of enforcement mechanism, maybe we got lucky last season.
Yeah, because, you know, when you have a few winters ago, when every Wednesday there was a major snowstorm, if you, people are parking on the street, then obviously it hurts the ability to clear the street. And so, we got lucky last year.
And the year before.
But, so I think we need to have something.
100% we did.
So you've heard some of the concerns, you know, the chief's concerns, your concerns, if you can draft something, and then we can review, and if we find it acceptable, adopt at our December 2nd meeting.
Sure, and I'll bounce it, Chief Sampson and DPW Director Goodwin in advance of your meeting as well, just so we have their feedback.
Have we ever looked into the cost of one of those reverse phone things where you call and anyone that signs up phone?
Like a code ride, you know, phone blast.
Yeah, you could do a phone blast for the next 48 hours, and if someone doesn't sign up for it and gets a ticket...
Do you have that through the regional dispatch center? You know, we don't use it that often. I think the last time you used it was the mayor's...
Yes.
Okay.
North Reading uses it for everything.
And they can just pick a geographic area, right, and blast it out.
But does it call landlines or cell phones?
Depends on what you sign up for.
Yeah, you have to list yourself.
Maybe we should look into that.
It can call a cellphone, I know that for a fact.
Right, so we could also look at that as part of our capital discussion, but, and that might be a good way to go for the future, but for this winter, I think we need some policy.
Yeah, we'll get you something in place and something that has common sense woven throughout it.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to see a total winter parking ban.
Agreed.
I wouldn't be in favor of that.
Thanks, and we're the enforcement arm, so we'll do whatever laws you put through, we'll make work.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you. All have a good night.
Costin, before we go, Chief Lacoste had something he wanted to add to that. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Having a blanket ban, you know, if it's a mild winter, I think that's unfortunate. You know, I think with technology and a little common sense, if people look at the weather forecast and see it's going to snow, they should get their car off the road. I know there's some cities and towns that have the, like the blue light that turns on in the intersection, you know, maybe that's something we could look at down the road.
Thank you. All right, our next agenda item is Masco Superintendent Search Community Advisory. We have some of our Masco reps. Would you like to address this?
Sure.
Do you want to...
Guys, why don't you grab a seat over there?
Sure.
Come on, Trevor.
So I'm not sure of what...
Okay. Sorry, Lisa McInnes, Middleton representative.
Okay, Adrian Hafey-Tenny, I'm a Topsfield rep for Masco School Committee.
And tell us, what's the composition of this community advisory committee that you're setting?
Okay, I'll give you a summary. So, as you know, our superintendent resigned, we've initiated a search for a replacement. As part of that, we wanted to make sure that certain stakeholder groups from the tri-town were represented in that process. So we made the decision to form a community advisory group. That is made up of some of Masco faculty, tri-town residents, elected officials, and the Superintendent Search Subcommittee that is part of the larger school committee. I think we're here because we've been trying to get a volunteer from each of the town's elected official groups, and this is the outstanding spot that we have. So we wanted to make sure that you guys knew about it, you had the opportunity to participate, and let us know who that person might be.
So we're looking for one community member from each town, and then we're looking for one elected official from each town?
Yes.
What do you anticipate the frequency of meeting for that group?
So we think the majority of the activity will happen between now and end of February, likely. It's tough to estimate because it is dependent on how many candidates we have. If we have six candidates, that's different than if we have 15 candidates. The body of the work will be probably three to five working sessions with the Subcommittee Advisory Group to do some preparing and some elimination rounds of the candidates, and then also phone screenings and first-round interviews with the candidates. So maybe we'll have six to 10 candidates in those first-round interviews, so you could think of those as a meeting as well. And then obviously some pre-work homework to make sure that we are prepared and efficient in those working sessions.
Okay. You need both the, two, both representatives from Middleton you don't have yet, right?
We have, we have lots of community members who have submitted letters of interest. We just don't have an elected official yet.
Correct. And we have not chosen any...
Yeah, we haven't chosen, but we are going to start that process ASAP.
Is that the full school committee that chooses that member at large?
So what we, the work that we do on the Superintendent Search Subcommittee will be to narrow it down to probably two or three final candidates who get recommended to the full school committee for...
No, I'm talking about the person that gets on the committee, the person at large. Who picks?
Oh, we do.
The full school committee?
The four of us that are on the Subcommittee.
That was my question.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Thank you. So anyone interested?
And it doesn't have to be from this, it can be any elected official, too. You guys know someone.
Elected and/or appointed or exclusively elected?
Or what, I'm sorry?
Appointed. So I think in our correspondence, we had talked about potentially someone representing town administration. I'm not available, unfortunately.
Right.
But our ATA, Jackie Brezner, is and is willing to do it if, I know you all wear many hats and are kind of tied up in other areas.
Yeah, there's a lot on your plate, Jackie.
And coming up to be more.
And, you know, your HR background, I think, would be helpful to that search committee, but not at the expense of you burning out with all the other things that you do.
I've been delegating some things off, to say the least, and we'll be through licensing season, which is kind of the odd thing right now. If none of the board members have the availability, I'm happy to serve, but if one of you wants to, all the better.
Having been through two superintendent searches, I'm not eager to do it again.
I've only done, I've only done one, so I'm not caught up as you, Costa.
But, you know, to, I would do it just to make your life easier, not that I'm itching to do it.
So why don't I just nominate you?
You guys can also talk about it and email Lisa tomorrow if that's, give you, give you some time to discuss offline and think what makes sense. Sleep on it if you want, you know. It is a big commitment. I work full-time, school committee, and this is a lot, and we're going to move fast. So whoever is on board has to be all in and be ready to go.
Right, because we are doing this ourselves, we're not outsourcing...
We're not outsourcing any of it.
That sounds like you, Costa. Well, the other drawback is that, you know, I already have many different commitments in the evenings, so...
Availability is considered.
So trying to find a day of the week that, you know, everybody in this large group will be able to do it will be a challenge in itself.
Yes, it will, yes.
Well, we'll get back to you.
Okay.
You know...
We're going to start reviewing all the letters of interest tomorrow, and we hope to make a decision in the next several days, potentially, so the sooner the better. But we'll, we'll make sure you guys have a seat.
Yep.
Okay?
Thank you. Appreciate you coming.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Trevor, were you here for the charter?
Did you already go?
Yes.
Yeah.
But, you know, we approved the language and signed the document. I hope that's what you were here to say. All right. Next, we'll...
He got to wait 10 minutes for...
Yeah, the request to access the Cobblestone Park. Yeah, the cob, request to access the Cobblestone Park.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Included in your packet is a request from Mr. Chuck Johnson. Oh, my God, Brad, how many documents do you have here? They're looking to do some work at the development up at Cobblestone Park, otherwise known as Peachy Circle. They have to access a tank or chamber that is difficult to access from the road, given the layout of the existing structures and some of the grading. So, they had reached out to us wanting to know if they could access from Natsu Way. Basically, there's a, I think, one section of wooden guardrail and a single panel fence that they would have to remove and then replace after the job, so they could get easy access. I personally have no issue with it, but I did reach out to legal counsel to put together a license agreement, just to make sure the town's interests are protected. And so, I'm requesting that the select board authorize me to enter into the license agreement, so we can let them go ahead and do the work. Included in your packet also is a sketch, just giving you a rough idea of where the access is relative to the pump chamber.
And, you know, it, it looks, you know, there's no grading on that plan, but it looks like from their internal roadway, there's, should be able to access it.
I think it's, it's more so like plantings and other things that have to really kind of like hop a curb and tear up some of the existing items there.
And.
To what, I'm sorry, now, so where it looks, they're kind of come in off from, geez, where are they trying to come in off of?
So, if you look at the second sheet with the overhead. So, this one here. So, this is Natsu Way.
Yep, yep.
This is where the proposed pump chamber is, and so, they'd be, there's kind of like a spray of pine trees up here, if you're driving through and picturing it. And then the guardrail and fence of them referencing is over here. So, as part of the license agreement, that after a place, anything that they remove, it would be based on my inspection, which honestly, I'm probably going to pass on to Mr. Goodwin.
That would be my second question.
Yeah, just to make sure, you know, if there's any grass disturbed or anything else, that they're on the hook to fix and replace everything. But, I figured, for the sake of being a good neighbor, there's no loss of value to us or anything. There wouldn't be a disruption to the road or traffic or neighbors. So, I'm always happy to be helpful when we can.
And eleven Natsu is ours? Is that Mira?
Uh, we own that section.
Okay.
Yeah.
And there'll be, how many days, I see the dates aren't on it yet, but how many, is it seven days, ten days? What are you thinking?
Uh, they haven't expressed to us how long.
I would want to.
That they're not going to be there for three months.
Exactly, yeah.
So, let me nail that down, maybe let them know anything more than two weeks they'd have to come back for approval or something like that. Okay.
Yeah, they would do this over the winter.
They want to get it done, like, now?
Okay.
Yeah.
Because you don't, wouldn't want it to continue when, you know, soccer season starts up again in the spring.
Agreed. So, I'll make the motion to give Justin authorization to go into a licensing agreement.
I'll second.
As long as, you know, anticipated work doesn't take more than two weeks.
Right, with a set, stated work, and obviously with Paul, Mr. Goodwin's input. Perfect. Yep.
There a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So, next, we'll do public comments. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to make a public comment about an item not on the agenda? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the tax classification hearings.
Chief, how you doing?
It's not a hearing that is going to be started.
Oh.
It's not, it's not a public hearing, you want to say?
Well, good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Oh, you know. Do I have to bring this closer?
All right, no, you're fine. Adam will come running out and adjust it if he needs to. Don't be alarmed.
I assume everybody got my letter?
Yes.
Those statistics, I know Costa did. You have that as well?
Yeah.
All right, well, I guess we can get down to it.
Well, since you mentioned, oh, the statistics. Yes, a couple of that I wanted to point out. From FY twenty to FY twenty-six, we had thirty-three new single-family homes over seven years. From last year to this year, it was only one. With condos in that same seven-year period, we had seventy-three new ones. And from last year to this year, zero. And that limited growth leads to financial problems in a two-and-a-half environment because there's nothing, no additional growth revenue to speak of. So, that was my comment on the statistics. So, you can begin your.
Okay. All right, let's see. Welcome to the classification hearing for fiscal twenty-six. Select Board is, needs to make some decisions tonight. Information in here is to help you guys make your decisions. We must vote on the open space discount, residential exemption, small commercial, and of course, classification shifting the tax rate. Oh, can't do that.
Want to nail that out?
Total value of the town this year, really, the percentages don't change too much. They're, they're minor amounts. Obviously, we had a slight increase in the total value, but really didn't affect the percentages too much. Total taxable valuation of the town has increased two-point-three percent, up to three billion, three-hundred-and-sixty-one. It wasn't that long ago that we hit the.
One billion.
Pardon?
Wasn't too long ago that we hit one billion.
All right, even the three billion was a few years back. The average single-family value is at nine-seventy, up from nine-sixty-two. Not a huge increase. In fact, we're starting to see some, some decreases in some areas, but nothing drastic yet. And then you can see the other things. The average condo value is up to six-thirty-nine from six-hundred. We did see condos come up this year quite a bit. Commercial value, industrial, personal, and utilities up to those percentages. So, why don't we talk about the open space discount? Open space is land that is maintained in an open and natural condition, which contributes significantly to the benefit and enjoyment of the public and which is not subject to conservation restriction, held from the production of income, or taxable under the provisions of sixty-one, sixty-one A. Sixty-one A or sixty-one B. Any large parcels we have currently are in sixty-one or A or B. We know the usual parcels, so. That's that. The select board may discount up to twenty-five percent of the open space share taxes. Of the three-hundred-and-fifty-one communities amassed, sixteen classify open space. We have the list here. New report, I believe, has a lot of open marshland that they put in this, probably because you can't do much else with it. And same thing with Rowley. I know nothing about those other communities, though, except Beverly. Beverly must have some, what do you think they got up there?
Uh, maybe on the water.
Under the ocean, I bet, yeah.
Yeah, something like that.
I'm going to say maybe on the water.
So, currently, we've determined that we don't have anything that's really meeting the requirements of open space land. Do we want to do force up, okay.
Yeah, is there a motion to set the open space discount at zero?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the residential exemption. Select Board may adopt an exemption of up to thirty-five percent to shift the residential class tax burden from lower. Assess properties that are the principal residence of a taxpayer to higher assessed properties and properties that are not the principal residence of a taxpayer. Most communities that do this are, communities have a lot of vacation properties or rental property, generally in the cities or along the coast. There's really nobody around here doing that. And you'll see the illustration of how you can shift that value around. We, like I said, there's not too many people around here that do that.
Well, again, is there a motion to set the residential exemption at zero?
I'll make that motion, not to accept the residential exemption.
Well, I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we have the small commercial exemption. The select board may adopt an exemption of up to a ten percent to shift the commercial class tax burden from eligible parcels to ineligible. Eligible parcels must be commercial property, solely occupied by the business with an average annual employment of ten or more people. And that list comes out from the state every year. And it also has to have an assessed valuation of a million dollars or less before the application of the exemption. Some communities have this, not a lot, when you look at the state. Nothing around here, really, no.
There isn't.
Yeah, and the mechanics of this work in a similar fashion to the residential exemption. And then annual application process is required, giving us payroll information.
So, are there properties that you feel would qualify or not in Middleton?
We've never done the exercise to really take that list and take it apart. I think a lot of smaller businesses are renting, so they don't necessarily own something. And, you know, certainly the commercial values are not low, so.
So, you're saying it's likely that no, nobody would qualify in Middleton?
Right, or it could be one or two or just a handful.
Yeah.
I did go through this exercise many times in North Reading. In North Reading, if you go back to our pie chart, we're very similar in size and we're very similar in our percentages. And when I went through this exercise, I had three that would have qualified. So, it's, it's really, for the town of Middleton, does not make any sense.
So, would you care to make a motion?
Oh, I would love to make that motion. We will not accept the small commercial exemption.
Well, in other words, set it at zero.
Sure.
It's always better to make the motion in the positive. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, in everybody's favorite, subject the classification. Cities and towns that are certified as assessing property at full and fresh cash, full and fair cash value may elect to shift the tax burden among the major classes, with certain limits established by the Commonwealth. The adoption of different rates does not change the total tax levy, and I think some people don't understand that. The, what we're raising is the same amount. It's just how you want to shift that on a percentage basis to the different classes. Out of, next slide, sorry. Out of the three-hundred-and-fifty-one in the Commonwealth, one-hundred-and-thirteen shift the rate of that, fifty-nine percent shift over one-hundred-and-fifty percent. In Essex County, this is the list of towns that do it. You'll see that most of these are larger communities with some very large commercial base. Maybe with the exception of Linfield, which I believe they're primarily, their commercial base is the marketplace and parts of Route One. We get the minimum residential factor. Do you want, do you want to read through that, or are we good?
I don't.
Maybe just summarize it?
Okay, uh, let's see. The MRF, or the minimum residential factor, established by the commissioners, used to make certain that the shift of the tax burden complies with the Classification Act. If the minimum residential factor would be less than point-six-five, the community cannot make the maximum shift and must use a factor less than one-and-a-half. The minimum residential factor here is, is ninety. So, on the next page, you see what the impact would be if we shifted the taxes at ten, ten percent, twenty-five percent, one-hundred-and-fifty percent. Bottom of that, you'll see that it just shifts who'd be paying more in the different classes. Not a huge difference there. The next page is where I really wanted to focus on this and just to show that the average single-family value, if you shift it five percent, would be a hundred-and-sixteen-dollar savings. But, the same value on the commercial side would be an extra six-hundred-and-twelve dollars. And then you can see as you go further down what the savings would be.
So, it's not a penny for a penny. In other words, if you shift this rate on the residential side, that does not mean that the hundred-and-twelve dollars is going to be borne on the commercial, industrial side. It's more than that because you're, you're moving that rate and reducing the residential. But, the biggest takeaway is the fact that we're not raising any more on the tax levy. The tax levy remains the same. We're governed by that.
Anyone in the audience which is, say anything on this issue?
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Peter Richardson. Businesses play an absolutely vital role in transforming a town into a community. When we think about what makes a place feel vibrant, welcoming, and whole, local businesses are at the heart of it. Many of the businesses here in Middleton are small, locally owned, staffed by community members and supported by all of us. I'd like to begin by pointing out just how fortunate we are. Middleton has an incredible mix of businesses that provide enormous benefits to our community. I personally love that I can pick up a prescription, grab something to eat, stop by the supermarket, and be home within an hour. That kind of convenience isn't an accident. It's a sign of a healthy business environment. Communities everywhere strive to have that blend of commercial uses that we enjoy here. For years, the town has treated our business, businesses fairly. And I believe, in return, many of those businesses have done whatever they can to support the town with not only their goods and services, but with their donations in time. The list of local events, charities, sports teams, and organizations that the business community supports is extensive, to name a few. We have Chief Will's Day. We have the Chief Will's Winter Festival. We have baseball, softball, the food pantry, the turkey trot, basketball, football, the pumpkin festival, the food truck festival, the rail trail, and Neighbors in Need, to name a few that I could think of. When money is donated to these organizations, it goes directly to where it is needed and where it benefits the community most. A quick story about the Neighbors in Need program. At a recent Board of Trade meeting at Teresa's, a local business owner was having lunch in the restaurant and overheard the presentation by the, by the Neighbors in Need and on the spot committed to donating ten thousand dollars. These are the kinds of businesses that make our town special. Another one of those businesses that goes the extra mile is Innovative Waste. Got Alex and Kylie here tonight from Innovative Waste. They maintain all the trash barrels at all our, our parks and fields free of charge. Now, imagine telling these local business owners, the people who invest their time, money, and energy into this town, that they must pay more simply because they are a business. Imagine telling them that well over half of their tax bill goes to the school budget, something they do not directly benefit from. I'd also like to point out that the commercial base cannot vote at town meeting and therefore have no say in the tax decisions that, that affect them. Think of how many jobs are created by a local economy. When we burden businesses with higher taxes, we risk driving away the very people that create those jobs and keep our town thriving. As I mentioned earlier, many of our businesses are owned local, are owned locally. many of our businesses are owned local, are owned locally, but some are not. Even, even the major corporations do not have unlimited resources. For them, it's often just a numbers game. When the cost of doing a business in, in a town becomes unsustainable, they leave. And I think we can all agree, we do not want to see empty storefronts where our pharmacies, fast food restaurants, and coffee shops once stood. When a business is forced to pay higher taxes, none of the outcomes are good. They may raise prices, they may cut jobs, and if neither of those measures work, they may close their doors. When that happens, we lose far more than just tax revenue. We, we lose the economic activity that they generate and the convenience they provide and the benefit they have on the community. We all know the cost to educate a child is substantial. The cost to educate an elementary student is $23,000 a year, and a Masco student more than $24,000 a year. As an example, my brother has four kids in the school system, mixed throughout How Manning and Masco. In a year, it, it costs $96,000 to educate his four kids, and he pays $15,000 a year in real estate taxes. If residents alone had to shoulder that entire cost, it would be devastating. Thankfully, a significant portion of that expense is subsidized by the taxes paid by our local businesses. They help make our community livable. I absolutely understand the desire to reduce the tax burden, but I not, I do not believe it is fair to shift that burden onto the businesses, especially when they are not given a voice in the process and when over 50% of the town's budget is for the schools. So tonight, I ask that we recognize the essential role our businesses play, not just as storefronts, but as partners in continuing to make Middleton a great town that we all care for and a town that has become one of the more desirable towns to live in in the North Shore. Let's continue treating them fairly, ensuring that they main, every part, remain a part of the community we all love. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Any comments from the board members or is there a motion?
Any other, uh?
Jim DeRocher, live at 15 Liberty Street in town. Um, my family and I live here. We also run a small business here. Um, so I see the issue from both sides. And what I really want is just what's best for the town. Um, as Pete mentioned, about 65% of our town budget goes to the schools. Businesses don't have children in that system, yet they already subsidize it. And when overrides or budgets get passed, like the four overrides we approved last year, businesses don't get a vote. They have no say, but they still see their tax bill increase. And a split rate hits small, local businesses the hardest. Our commercial tax base is about 17%. That means to give the average homeowner modest relief, maybe $100 a year, the average business would get hit with the tax increase many times that amount. And it's not the big national change like CVS that'll feel it. It's the small local businesses, the ones who actually show up for this town. Something that's deeply important to me and my family is the community. It's the reason we chose to live in Middleton. We wanted to live in a small town where we could get involved, where we could give back and help make things better. As a business owner, we spend roughly $10,000 a year sponsoring town events like the food truck festival, the turkey trot, Little League, soccer, PTO, and really anyone that comes and asks us for money in the town. And when you look at the sponsor boards at any event, it's almost entirely small, local businesses standing behind this community, not the large change. These are the people who make Middleton feel like home. A significant increase in the commercial tax rate would hit those very businesses the hardest. It won't be CVS feeling the impact. It would be businesses like mine, the ones who consistently show up, support our kids, and hate, help make this town a community we all love. I'm a homeowner too, so I would personally save money if this was passed. But I still don't support it because the long-term cost to our small businesses and to our community identity is far greater than the short-term benefit. I urge you to vote no on a split tax rate, not because businesses shouldn't contribute, but because in a town with such a small commercial base, this, this approach would place a heavy burden on the very people who show up and support our thriving community.
Thank you, Jim.
Anyone else?
Tullarina, 115 River Street. I do not own a business in town, but I did raise my family here. And going into retirement at some point, I would love to pay less taxes in my residence. However, what am I afraid of? If we tax the commercial base, which we don't really have value-wise as much as other communities that are splitting their rate. If the, if we do that and we run them out of town, what's going to go in its place? A 40B, apartment housing, because the state is now geared towards, we need more housing, we need more housing. You're going to have apartment buildings built that the taxes that we receive from that building wouldn't have been paid for the amount of students that are going to go to school. That's what I'm worried about, and that's why I hope tonight you vote no.
Thank you, Tullarina.
Hmm? Anyone else? Hmm? Any board member?
Yeah, a couple things to say. As, as most people I think in the room know, it, the split rate is something that I've advocated for many years. Um, I believe it's the right thing to do. You know, we just talked about the small commercial exemption and it was talked about that we don't have any businesses that even qualify. So we don't have the little that we did years ago, the, the small businesses. It's, uh, businesses are the, the CVSs, the Market Basket Plaza. We have, um, Landwoods that own multiple properties. And, um, one thing that's surprising to most, that Middleton's commercial percentage is 16.13%. And when you look at the other towns that do have a split rate, they're all similar to us. Andover is 17.6. I mean, um, Peabody is 16.5, almost exactly the same. They have a split rate. Uh, interestingly enough, Lynn only has 10% commercial. You, you know, when you think of Middleton, you think it's a small residential town, but then when you compare it to Lynn, we have a higher percentage commercial than Lynn. We have a higher commercial percentage than Salem. So it's not that we're, this, this town that doesn't have the, the commercial base to support this. Um, you know, we talk, we have the Affordable Housing Trust, and a thing that comes up and we hear over and over is that, uh, people on fixed income need to find a way to age in place. And that phrase is used, age in place, age in place. This is a way to give back a little bit to all the homeowners who are on fixed income that, that we want to see stay in Middleton and not be forced to sell their homes and move out because they can't afford it. I know it's not a lot of money that each would get, but it's, I think this is the time that we could show, uh, some compassion and good faith to, to that constituency, and, uh, I, I support a small shift.
Gary?
The only thing that I'd like to add on that, um, Jeff, when we talk about the small commercial exemption, there are so many parameters that actually go into that, so I'm going to break it down. The million dollars that that is one of the restrictions for the value of that commercial property, that million dollars, and I'm going to outdate myself for how long I've been in assessing rate now, has been a million for as long as I can remember, 28 years. So the state has never changed that. Now, if we add in the component of what it costs for construction today versus what the construction cost was when the state implemented this or created the small commercial exemption, the cost of construction was probably a quarter of what it is today. I mean, to, to build a house today, you're looking at around $242 a square foot. A commercial building, if someone was to come in to the town of Middleton and build a commercial building, you're probably looking at more in the range of like 300 and, say, 350. Now, when you have a commercial interest for building in the town of, that doesn't have infrastructure such as sewage. So if we had a lot on, say, Main Street, North Main, South Main Street, and they wanted to put in a restaurant there, they're very restricted in what they can do. I mean, look at what the 99 had to do just to get their septic in, you know how much that cost them? Yeah, they're a chain. It, it was worth it for them to do that. But when you're in a community that does not have the infrastructure such as our Lynn, such as our Peabody, such as our Linfield, they all have that infrastructure in their property that can sustain where a commercial owner can walk in there, pull out a building permit, and be granted that. Here, in the town of Middleton, they have a lot of restrictions. So for that reason, for those reasons, I am not for the split rate for the town of Middleton. I just don't think it's in our best interest. That's just my opinion.
Beyond, you know, the economics, I think, you know, it comes down for me, it's an issue of fairness. You know, through, if you look at throughout the state, there are communities with under 5% commercial that classify and communities with over 50% commercial that do not classify. So the amount of commercial doesn't really correlate to whether a community shifts the tax burden or not. I think it comes down to how they want to, but how fairly they want to treat everyone in the town. And for a lot of the things that were mentioned between the school budgets and, you know, everything else, I think taxing everyone at the same rate is the fair thing to do.
And if I, if you, if I can, Mr. Chairman, I respect everyone who, you know, how you slice the numbers. I mean, uh, depends on how one does it, so please respect the way I have, as, as I respect others who haven't done. Going by the CIP, I, you know, I find 15 communities that are close to, to Middleton. And of that, half of them, they, they don't. They keep a single rate. And of the towns, seven of them that, or cities that do shift the burden, they're out one. They've been mentioned tonight, but North Andover, Salem, Peabody, Lynn, New Bedford, I'm sorry, they're not in the league, is the same league size wise as Middleton. Um, and again, you can split the numbers and make it the way you want, but for a community that has, you know, eight, call it 80/20, if I'm not mistaken, just a round number, 80% residential, 20%, I think it's 18% residential, uh, commercial, if I'm not last count.
Eighty, eighty-seven, twelve.
What was it?
Eighty-seven, thirteen, right?
No, six.
I'm just saying, the ball, 80/20, okay?
Eighty-seven, eighty-seven.
When, when you, I mean, if I was just looking to save some money for myself, then I would, I would say, yeah. But that's, I'm not here for myself. I'm here for, for everyone in the town. You start off moving the split rate, and the next year, it's a little more. And the next year, it's a little more because it's not enough for you. And within 10 years, you're, you're, you're not saving $116. It's 1,000. And that will have an impact then at that point on Middleton not having enough, enough commercial now that it won't be feasible and for those, for those businesses. And there are towns like us that did it, and they've now been since 2018, creating task force to try to gradually draw back to a single rate, um, for that reason, because they find that they've lost the ability to be competitive for, for other businesses. And when you factor in that we are, we don't have all the services, right? That we still have well, we don't have public sewer. I mean, those are, those are huge costs, uh, that, you know, should, should Middleton want to attract and, and, you know, create bigger areas for commercial to help us, we'll have, we'll have pushed ourselves out, have any ability for that. So I, again, I appreciate everybody slicing the way they slice it. That's just the way I see it. Um, and, uh, I just think it creates a slippery slope, and, and I'll agree with Coster in the fairness of it. And, uh, that's my two cents.
Okay. Is there a motion at this point?
I'll make a motion to not shift the tax rate for 2026.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right. So we have the same.
Thank you.
Again. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Good job, Brad.
I just wanted to say thank you to my board, who continues to be a great resource, and to my excellent staff, and, uh, looking forward to moving to a new building soon enough, continuing.
And you'll stay with us for a few more years.
Oh, yeah. I'll be here. Yeah, I'll be here.
Brad, how many 25 quarters this year?
Twenty-five years. I think I've missed what?
It was a hundred quarters.
Hundred quarters.
Hundred quarters. I think I've missed two classification years. Have I?
Oh, well, yeah, one when you broke your hand.
Yep. And then I think I was in class in another.
No, I always had you back.
Anyway.
Don't worry.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you, Brad.
Gentlemen, you from Peachey?
We are.
We approved your request. Uh, Justin will be in touch.
Okay.
Uh, the only proviso was that we, that the work take two weeks or less. If, and if it's going to take more, we'll, we'll, Justin will work with you. Okay?
Well, within the current estimate, so.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm a little out of order, but thank you.
No problem. We just, we didn't even get a notification of it. My wife just happened to be reading it and found out while she was online that it was coming up, so we just jumped on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, next is the proposed town meeting schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Included in your packet is the proposed town meeting schedule. Thank you, uh, Jackie, for going through and compiling this. And we did bounce it off our town clerk, Eileen Twist, to make sure, um, dates relative to elections and other things were taken into consideration as well. So without reading this line for line, but at a high level, uh, budget instructions were distributed to, um, town departments. Um, and I provided guidance in October. Uh, upcoming on Wednesday, December 17th, the operating budget requests are due to my office via the ClearGov portal. Uh, those will be reviewed, uh, leading up until Saturday, February 7th, was, which is the Operating Budget Summit. Um, otherwise, no one has Budget Saturday. Mark your calendars. Here at Fuller Meadow. Turning the page, Saturday, March 7th, is the Capitol Budget Summit. Um, that, Jackie's going to kill me. I would love to have at the new building, but we might not be able to. But.
But it might.
If I'm laying the goal, I'm putting it out, I'm putting it out in the universe, you know?
It may happen.
Um, we'll see. I'm going to really yell that so hard tomorrow. So.
I don't yell.
She'll, she'll just be disappointed.
I'm just going to be disappointed.
So we'll go ahead and, uh, look into that for March 7th. And then wrapping things up, Tuesday, May 12th, for the annual town meeting. Um, in my excitement here, I accidentally said that that is also going to be at the Town Hall and Community Center. It is not, it's going to be at How Manning. Um, but what is of interest, Tuesday, May 19th, the annual town election was an edit we did have to make because that will be at the Town Hall and Community Center definitively, and that is extraordinarily exciting. So.
And I'm sure the school committee and school administration are equally excited.
I, I am sure. They, uh, they mirror our enthusiasm. So, um, just on a high level, it's early, but we wanted to get that out there. Uh, we'll push it out on the town website and, um, start getting those dates out there to, to various players and town boards and committees.
And citizens petitions, if they are about zoning.
Excuse me?
Do they need to be in? And if they're not about zoning or bylaws, when do they need to be in?
Uh, let me work backwards off the calendar on that, and we'll make mention of it at the next TA update to give people a definitive timeline.
And, you know, if you are considering a citizen's petition, you know, get in touch with the, uh, town administrator. Uh, they will help you draft your petition so that it, if it passes, it will do what it is that you are trying to do.
Tuesday, January 27th. Thanks, Jack.
Very good. Anything else on the schedule? All right. Police station sale updates.
I'm going to recuse myself, Coster, because I'm the butter. I'm going to recuse myself, Costa, because I'm the butter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So despite a tremendous amount of effort, unfortunately, the deadline for proposed bids for the police station sale came and went without an offer on this past Wednesday, the 12th of November. So we're not entirely back to the drawing board. A lot of the framework and pieces are still there, we just have to reboot a couple different items of this before we push it back out. There were certainly interests, we had a walkthrough, folks came by, kicked the tires on it. It is an attractive parcel, it's right on Route 114, about an acre, but there are some unique elements to that property that I think we need to take into consideration. And so to nail down a couple items before I start rehashing the RFP, the property appraised at a million, and so I think, given that, we had an obligation to the residents and taxpayers that our lowest accepted bid would be a million. We put it out at that, we didn't get any responses. I think at that point, we've done our due diligence, and it may be worth it to discuss bringing that down a little bit and a number that, you know, maybe the board sees fit. So that's piece one. Number two, the RFP split proposal, weighted 60/40, so 60% was the price, 40% was a narrative, talking about what their intentions were for it. As an organization, we have boards and committees, specifically the ZBA, in place to help protect those interests. And so I think having that in the RFP, while intention, may have been cumbersome for some folks that were interested in it, but as businesspeople aren't really as tuned in or accustomed to the way we do things in the public sector, and I think that may have just been an obstacle where they looked at it and they were like, I'm not, this is more headaches than it's worth to me. So I think it may be worth just doing straight price when we put it out again. And then the third is the RFP didn't allow for any contingencies relative to the prospective buyer's ability to get permitting. And so that lot, it's uniquely split between business and residential, there are some opportunities there, but it would require some type of relief from the ZBA if they were to go in a one direction or another. And so as it is by right, there are some limitations there, and I think there may be hesitancy from prospective bidders to make a financial commitment on the property if they don't definitively know they're going to be able to do what they want to do without having an opportunity to go through the permitting process. So I want to work with legal counsel, Liz Lyden, specifically at MTC, to work out something that would satisfy the town's needs, but also make it a little more reasonable and take some of the risk away for somebody that's interested in purchasing the property. So those are three elements that I'm considering. I don't know if the board had anything else they wanted to add to that.
Do we need to have a minimum price?
No.
And if we have no minimum price, do we have to accept any bids?
No. And that's language that we can mark on too, maybe is just striking the minimum in general, but if it's something that's lower than the town is willing to stomach, then we can say thanks, but no thanks.
I don't want to go way outside here, but you know, for the things you listed, a million dollars didn't, you know, it wasn't attractive. But in order to try to get the most we can, right, you know, making sure that a buyer knows that they can achieve those obstacles that are there, while at the same time trying to get the most we can for the taxpayer, you know, is there any thought, are we able to go to auction for the property like that?
We could, slightly different process, but I can look into it with legal and maybe come back and see like what it would look like.
I'm saying as an, if it's an auction.
Like fall back on if it doesn't, yeah, like a traditional auction.
I don't know if as a municipality, we can do that, or...
You can.
You know, but, and, you know, I just was thinking it, so I'm not even so sure, I haven't even flushed it out, that there's a great advantage to that, but...
Let me look into the process, and I'll get back to you.
And there are certain things that can be done there by right with maybe site plan approval, depending on what they want to do. So when we go back out, maybe provide a list of what could be done there by right. Right? Because if you can do it by right, that mitigates your risk, because basically you draw your plans up and you take it to the building inspector and you're good to go. And somebody's looking at the property would analyze our sort of bylaws to see, yeah, I mean, I may be able to do what I want there, but it's, you know, iffy, so I'm not really going to go forward with a too high a price. But, you know, and maybe somebody doesn't do that. So we do some of the work for them, since it should be easy enough for us to put that list together.
Right, and more than reasonable, in your concern.
That's a good suggestion, Costa, I like that.
And I wouldn't limit the auction idea now that I'm sitting here with combining other properties. Just something to think about.
Yeah.
You know, if it's advantageous to the town, I don't, you know...
Yeah, and I think the auction thing in particular for this one, because some other properties that we're holding, like Memorial Hall, for example, the town wants to maintain some element of control over what that looks like, right?
No.
For this one, we're still going to sell it.
Right.
Right, so it's a little cleaner.
We want to be free and clear.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate the feedback, and I'll get something together for your December 2nd meeting, and from there, we'll launch it out.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any updates or announcements from any of the board members?
I do not.
All right. Next, propose to go into executive. You have something?
I'm sorry, it's not quite an update or an announcement, but a question I wanted. So we've done, you know, the touring of the new facility and the department heads and whatnot. Are we planning something to do that town employees could get a chance to walk through that before their first day? Is that something you guys have on the whiteboard?
So, we've gotten department heads through.
Yeah, you know what I mean, because, I mean, a lot of people ask, and it comes to, sure will, but...
And police and fire rank and file?
Yeah, yeah, sure, we've gotten feedback on that.
Very good.
We've made a point of incorporating them, but if there's anybody that you're talking to that hasn't had a chance...
COA, I mean, you know, all.
Yeah, yeah, send them our way.
I don't want, you know, some of those important administrative assistant or support services, you know, they're nervous, they want to see where the, you know, where the new spot is, and it wouldn't take a lot, but I think it would do a lot.
Yeah, great idea.
Yeah, we've been trying to be inclusive, but send them our way if anybody runs into you.
Okay, thank you, I will.
All right, anything else?
I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay. So propose to go into executive session out of General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, Relative to an Acting Town Administrator.
Then will we go into executive session or relative to acting town administrator?
Will you return to open session?
Anyway, we will not.
And we will not be returning.
Deb, would you call the roll, please?
Sure. Rick?
Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah.
And I am yes.
I'm sorry, who is the second?